I'm gonna call the meeting to order, special meeting for Budget Workshop. And on this first day of June 2022. And with that, we will officially open things. Pass it on to Sean.
Well, very good. This is a workshop, so a little bit different format. So a little less formal and structured. No official action tonight, other than direction to me and staff. So I will note that Mayor Strosser, Councilmember Minette, Councilmember Fernandez, Vice Mayor Fleming, and Councilmember Peterson are with us. And, yes, sir?
And before I make any mistakes, should we do roll call and the Pledge of Allegiance?
We can do the pledge, absolutely. Gabby's not here tonight, so we can, I can just note for the record that everyone's here, but we could do roll call if you prefer as well. And we would do the land recognition as well, and then the pledge.
Okay.
Danielle, you know the land recognition by heart.
(laughing).
Thank you.
I know you do.
Oh, let me catch my breath here for a second. We actually do not have the Nissen on right now.
It's brief. This meeting resides on the ancestral homelands of the Nevada City Ranchery and Nissen on track.
Thank you. Yeah, no, not your fault. I'm the one that's not prepared, so.
Yeah, we don't have the full one that you read at the last minute.
I'm glad you said it, Duane.
I think this is, this is all we have, the Pledge of Allegiance. Then we would still potentially check for public comment.
Would you like me to remind you of the Pledge of Allegiance?
No.
You have to read that, right?
So for those of you, I would like, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Because everyone heard that it was budget and I was talking for two hours, nobody is in the Zoom. I'm sure there's people watching at home on YouTube or on television. Yes, if you wanted to have public comment for items not on the agenda, but then after that, we could certainly entertain questions with your permission from the audience on the agenda item.
Okay, so at this point, I'm gonna open the floor to public comment. If you have something that is not on tonight's budget agenda, you will have three minutes. We will listen to everything you have to say. We will not respond due to Brown Act. But anything that is important, obviously, we will work with you to put it on a future agenda. With that, if anybody has public comment, please approach the mic.
Hello, good afternoon, city council members. So lovely to be back here in the chambers and see all of you. My name is Diana Gamzon, and I'm a resident of downtown Nevada City. I live on King Hiram Way, also work on Broad Street. And today, I'm here in my capacity as Executive Director of the Nevada County Cannabis Alliance. We are a trade association representing the legal cannabis industry here. We have over 200 members in the local cannabis industry. And I just, I want to let you, I just wanna share the message, two messages. Number one, as somebody who lives downtown and works downtown, I care very, very deeply about the economic vitality, about the health of our city. And so my personal commitment is to just continue to stay involved and active in ways that I can help to add to that vibrancy. And in my professional capacity, I want to let you know that I'm also going to continue efforts to ensure that we have a strong and thriving cannabis industry. As you all know, Nevada City took a historic step in 2018 as our cannabis ordinance was adopted with unanimous city council vote. And to date, there's over about two dozen cannabis businesses that have launched. These are local entrepreneurs that bring over 100 full-time employees and over $2 million in tax revenue to date to our little old Nevada City. And I really do believe that the success of our local cannabis industry has also impacted a revitalization to our Seven Hills District. These employees are eating downtown, they're dining downtown, they're shopping at Seven Hills District, you know, businesses, whether it's Levity Resources or some of the other great wellness businesses in the area. And so our cannabis businesses have been involved in Nevada City, participating and sponsoring the Nevada City Cleanup, Earth Day, and sponsoring trails, Pioneer Park Trail. And so the cannabis industry does face a unique set of challenges right now due to market consolidation and a whole bunch of factors. But yet, we are sitting on truly the capital of the craft cannabis industry in Northern California, and we have a very, very unique opportunity to capitalize on our small craft cannabis businesses here, our amazing cultivators that are operating in the county, the prized genetics that we have here. And so I'm really looking forward to the opportunities that this year brings. I'm looking forward to speaking to all of you in more detail about some of these opportunities, sitting down with staff, but lots to look forward to in the upcoming year, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Diana.
Thanks, Diana.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, with that, I will close the physical side of public comment. Can we check one more time and see if there's anybody virtually out there that would like to speak?
There's no one in attendance, but just in case someone's trying to log on, if you would like to make public comment by Zoom, press the raise hand button or star nine if you're on the phone. Still nobody in there.
Okay, with that, I do, I am closing public comment.
Perfect. Well, sorry I interrupted your process there, Mr. Mayor, but so the workshop, a little different, you know, we will try not to take up too much of your time, trying to be open and transparent about where we are with the budget and where we are looking to, what direction we're looking to head in. It certainly will not bother me if you get up and get more snacks or, you know, do anything else that you might like, and that goes for staff or anybody in the audience as well. And we can take questions at any time. There's some logical breaks in the process. Format-wise, I'll, I'll take about the first 40%, Victoria, the second 40%, and then it'll be back to me for some closing. Questions anywhere along the way, it's great. Gabby's not here this evening, so I'll run the Zoom and I'll put the items up on the screen. I don't have any things going on the screen, so it'll be when Victoria's up here. All of you know that the challenges that the city has faced over the last couple of years, I don't think I need to rehash that.
Couple?
Last couple decades, centuries, you know, it's been longer than that, actually. So 2056 will be our 200th anniversary.
Wow.
I can't wait.
Yeah. So what you all do tonight, and especially what you do in strategic planning in the next couple of months, will really chart the course for what we look like in 2056 and whether, you know, our actions today were a success or not. Unfortunately, often you don't get to see the fruits of your labor as council members. I feel bad for you for that, but, you know, you all live in town, so you get to see it either way. You just don't necessarily get to see it in your four, eight, 12, 20 years on council.
(laughing). As long as it happens, as long as it happens.
You know, there is a heavy lift in front of us, but I think we're well positioned. You adopted this fiscal year budget on January 26th, as you know, as well as a whole slew of policies. We didn't do a mid-year because that was effectively the mid-year time. I would say that the adopt, currently adopted budget largely duplicated the previous year's budget, and even that was a heavy lift for Joan to just be able to validate the numbers that were in the background there. Victoria Knoll, who is in the audience and will be coming up in a little bit, our new CFO, started the same day as me, almost three months ago to the day. And I would note that in a good year, it'll probably take us three months to build a good budget for you. And we've been doing some other things, you know, occasionally here and there. But, you know, we'll get progressively better as we go. So we've been working to confirm budget numbers, pull apart entries, we can't tie back to validated activities. The workshop, we're really looking to, you know, show you some things that you've seen in previous budgets that we might not carry forward because they're not gonna be part of our built-in budget, but it is the, kind of the language that you've seen before. And then there's other things that are new that you haven't seen before, so we'll call those out as we go through. I would like to really thank staff, honestly, across the board, the staff here. If this was almost any other city, in the budget situation that we're in, the spending patterns, the project allocations, almost anything else, slowly you wouldn't have seen it, but we would have been driven into the ground. But staff did a very good job of staying within budget, even when they couldn't necessarily see the numbers at any given time, and did great. But in addition to Victoria, who will speak a little bit later, you have Tanya, who's back there that you all know, and so she handles our utility billing, all of our fees, cash collections, in addition to the 25 other things that she does. Brittany, who is sitting next to her, handles accounts payable and banking, our credit cards, our fuel cards, all of our accounts with vendors, everything from cell phones to sludge hauling and everything in between.
She no longer gets checks signed.
She gets checks signed, just not by you.
(laughing).
Yes, now she, now she harasses me professionally. It's her job to make sure that I sign them in timely fashion. And then, of course, Gabby, who's not with us tonight, in addition to being the Deputy City Clerk, is also our HR function, payroll benefits administration, so making sure that our three and a half million dollars of investment in our human capital is done, you know, appropriately in the budget. So what I really hope tonight is that kind of high-level overview of our revenues, our expenditures, department-level review, really discuss where our reserves are and talk about personnel. Certainly, ask any questions you want. If they're highly detailed, we might need to, you know, get back to you on them. And it's always possible that you ask a question that we don't know the answer to, and then I'll look at Victoria. And if she doesn't know, then we'll just have to get back to you.
Can I just acknowledge one thing is that we have been through a couple of tough years, and these people who are sitting out in our audience tonight have done an amazing job of holding us together because they've worn many hats. And I just wanna thank you all.
You're here.
Thank you. So what we're presenting is a draft. It does tie out to our previous budget. It will represent a balanced budget. We're conservative in revenue estimates, and we are fully allocating expenditures. In other words, we're not saying we're gonna make a whole bunch of money that we're not gonna make, and we're not shortchanging the expenditures and hope that, you know, revenues come in higher. So, you know, but what we're not doing is we're not allocating the $777,000 and change of American Rescue Plan Act money. So we don't wanna balance the budget with that money. We will receive the second half of that payment, and then that money will be sitting there for the outcome of strategic planning. And after we go through strategic planning, we'll adopt the strategic plan, and then we'll do a budget amendment to reflect the money allocation there into the projects that I'm sure you will deliberate on and give me direction to bring forward in that process, so. And I anticipate that'll probably be September. And at that point, we'll also bring back to you a new CIP. So the capital improvement program was adopted in January with the budget, and we're right in the middle of the Commercial Street project, have several other projects in the hopper, but, you know, amending that so close to what we just adopted, you know, it puts us a little close. So this'll give us a little bit of space, give you a better capital improvement plan update. It also will allow us to see through the first couple cycles of infrastructure grant applications that will be coming out soon to see where we might be positioned to have to allocate matching funds if there's any on the horizon. With regard to the audit, that was day one for Victoria. She jumped right in, and the audit's well underway. We anticipate bringing it back to you in the near future and then immediately starting the next audit because we'll be closing out the budget. But, so you'll see some terms in what we've presented, like projected for fiscal year 2021. So that term projected turns to, turns to actuals when the audit's done. So that's why it says projected, projected, because we haven't audited those financials, so we don't actually, we do know what they are, but we just don't have an audited, you know, fund balance for all those accounts, so that's why it says that. So starting with revenues, so our revenues should be, are they projected to be at or above 2021 fiscal year revenues as budgeted? So in other words, we will anticipate receiving more revenue than we budgeted for in most categories. And then going into next fiscal year, we're looking at about a seven, a little over 7% total revenue increase. That's about $391,000. So I will continue to say that we are revenue constrained, so we don't have an, really have a spending problem. We haven't even spent all of our budgeted monies for the last couple of years due to COVID and a number of other things. We do have a less-than-optimal regular recurring revenue stream to support the services that the community really needs. So that's a challenge, which really is my job to turn into opportunities for all of you to make policy decisions on as we go through the year. So property taxes, I know, you know, in the last budget, you got the word that we get .61456, or let's just say .61% of the countywide ad valorem property tax, which is the 1% tax everyone pays. So this number fluctuates every year, but it's pretty close to that on an ongoing basis. And it's accurate, but it, there's some context there. So it's based on the countywide number. So the county has about $22.7 billion in assessed value, so they generate countywide about $227 million in property taxes a year. And our allocation, that .61% in last year's budget was $1.395 million. That's that .61% of the 227 million that they collect. So it sounds low. It's like, oh, we're only .61% of the county. I would say the number is actually 1.449. By the time we adopt the budget, we're gonna get more in property tax than they had initially allocated to us. That formula is based on Prop 13 passed, and it messed the whole world of property tax values up and a number of other things. And right, wrong, or indifferent, they pass a series of legislations to try to fix the problem, and some of the fixes were worse than the problem in the first place. What we landed on, or what this county does now, is the AB-8 allocation method. So for all intents and purposes, they took our 1978, 1979 property tax in Nevada City, and that creates our base. They did that for all the jurisdictions in the county. That creates your base. That is fixed. It will never change short of constitutional amendment in California. The growth or decline, however, is not fixed. So we can either realize additional revenues, or we can lose property tax value based on what changes there are specific to Nevada City, not the county as a whole. The base is county as a whole. The changes are specific to Nevada City. So when you look at that, another way to slice that, that pie is to say that the assessed value in Nevada City is $642 million and change. Ad valorem collections, that 1% specifically Nevada City, 6.4 million. Our allocation at the 1.395, which we know we got more than that, but is, that means we get 22% of the property taxes collected against Nevada City properties. That number's higher than many cities enjoy. So we have this .61% really low, 22% really high. They're the same amount of dollars at the end of the day. So the dollars equate to, just for simple math, this is more for the people watching on YouTube, or so my kids can make fun of me, because Common Core is very different than the way I learned. But if you bought your house in Nevada City five years ago, $500,000, the ad valorem tax can only go up by 2% a year maximum. So if your assessed value is $550,000, then you're gonna pay $5,500 in that ad valorem tax annually, right? Nevada City will get $1,195 of those dollars. That's, you know, that's the math. So, you know, there's a number of reasons why Nevada City is not favorably positioned to make big increases in property tax. Amongst them are our size, our density, our lack of commercially developed property. Commercial properties inherently have more value, you know, per square foot or per acre than residential properties generally do. We're the county seat, so we have a whole bunch of buildings that don't pay any property tax at all, and never will, at least not to us. And then, for good reason, we are a very large landowner in the community, and that land generates no tax for us because it's open space. So we are, while we can generate more property tax, the growth that we would see there is gonna be relatively small. So we anticipate 2.5% property tax growth this year, and that's from the assessor's numbers. So it's, we'll go up to 1.45 million. It's about $36,000 in growth in our second-largest bucket of tax generation. There's several smaller components that I put in the packet. So there's secured property tax, that's basically land and buildings. There's unsecured, that's like motorhomes and airplanes and things like that that you'll see. We don't have a lot of $26,000 or something like that in unsecured. There is supplemental, which is anytime one of those secured or unsecured sells, and the amount that it sells for is greater than what its previously assessed value is. They assess to the sales price and then reassess a charge, so the supplemental comes differently in that one year, and then on the ongoing, it's based on the new assessed value. So we expect supplemental to go up 25% this year because we've had a number of houses that sold that had a, you know, sales price of a million, but their tax basis was 500,000. Nonetheless, it's gonna be, you know, $30,000 or $20,000 difference for us, even though it's 25% increase, it's not that much. So all of our property tax put together kind of falls into that same, you know, 2.5% to 2.7% total value increase. I would say overall, our property tax base is good, but we are going to, the county has agreed to engage in an audit of our property tax allocation. They haven't agreed to pay for it yet, but I will get there with them on that. Grass Valley did do the same thing, and they did find some errors. It wasn't in the, in the allocation math, but in the, how it was, you know, applied over the years. So we maybe do some money, but I would not anticipate that to be a large amount. The other big piece of our pie is sales tax. So we're 8.375% in the city, and that's broken down to the state rate and special tax rate. So the state rate's 7.25%, of which 5% state, 1% is us, the city. Not all cities get that, by the way. Some counties have, were able to obtain that. And then .25% of it goes to the county. And then the special taxes in the county are 1.125, which is .25% county library tax, which was a doubling that was once .125, and then they increased it, and it's got a sunset down the road. And then our .375% Public Safety Tax Measure C and .5% what was Measure S, now Measure M. So the max in California without approval from the California Legislature is 9.25%. So if the county were to opt to get a sales tax passed, we'd get very close to our cap and make it exceedingly difficult for us to move forward. So the math analogy again is if I go across the street, Shane's wearing a hat, so, smart guy. If I go across the street and buy a Bill Falcone Stetson at the hat shop, which I should because the sun's out all the time, for $100, that'd be a cheap Stetson, I'll pay 8.38 in sales tax rounded up, right? So 50 cents of that, of that 8.38 will come to the city as sales tax, 50 cents will come as Measure M, and 38 cents will come as Measure C to the city, so about 16%. So we said property tax, we're getting 21%. Sales tax, we're getting 16%. The adopted budget for sales tax for this year was 1.246 million. The actuals are gonna be over 1.5 million. So it's anomalous because we're gonna say that sales tax is going to be flat. We're not gonna have an increase next year. But the budget's gonna be 20%, 28% increase from the current year's sales tax because of the difference between what was budgeted and what actuals are. So that is the lion's share of our increase.
Question?
Yes, sir?
If the county succeeds in passing their sales tax, how much, what's their percentage before we hit the cap?
So they're, they're proposing a five, a .5%.
And that would mean to us how much do we need to get to cap?
So then we'd be at 9.875. So it'd be the .125 plus the 2.5, so the .3, .25 is what's left. So that's, we could never get anything that, like what we've done before with the half cent or the .375. Without, there have been communities that have gotten legislative overrides for that. There are some that, that did it before the law went into effect, so they already were grandfathered in. But to my knowledge, the only ones that have done that are in the Bay Area, and ones that have, some of them are small, like Atherton, but they have a little bit more money than us.
Yeah, just a little.
It's a small amount. So, so Measure M and Measure C really come to us the same way as our regular sales tax, except they don't include pooled sales tax amounts. Special tax don't include pooled sales tax amounts. So our regular sales tax that comes to us includes the pools, things like Amazon, things like T-Mobile phone sales, things that are not, just because something is purchased in one town doesn't necessarily mean it's going to exclusively those people. And so the pools in this county, as they have in many areas, have gone down tremendously. Our pool funding is probably better than most, but we anticipate that to kind of stay on a level decline over time. Has to do with the way these last-mile distribution centers have reallocated some of their, the way they do business, the way that the pools get funded. So the winners in that are the places that had warehouses, where they moved the sales decks to that warehouse. And unless my walking and driving around town missed something, we don't have any Amazon warehouses, nor do we want any Amazon warehouses, so we won't be the recipients of that.
Does that apply to some of the cannabis industries or our small manufacturing folks? I know several here in town, products, they make 10,000 widgets. Does that come back to us even though it's a smaller manufacturing facility?
So generally not. If it's manufacturing and they're putting it out wholesale, and then it's going to somewhere on a retail basis, unless they're, unless it's retail out of like a Home Depot size activity, then it would fall into the pool. But, you know, our, you know, Grass Valley hardware stores and lumber places and things like that are not gonna be in that realm.
So our manufacturers are wholesale.
Right, yeah. And essentially all of your cannabis industry, and, and, did she leave?
She just left.
She could, I was gonna say she could come smack me in the face, but from a legal perspective, none of your manufacturers are retailers because there's only one authorized dispensary retailer, and that's, so that's where your cultivators are selling, you know, you know, either the flowers or the, you know, whatever the products are to, and then maybe somebody's manufacturing it or somebody's changing it into other things. Ultimately, it all comes to one place to be sold. In this city, Elevation is the only place that's generating sales tax.
So how, like the testing lab?
They're not generating sales tax. There is cannabis tax, and we'll get to that. So that's a city-specific tax.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering then.
So, so where do we put our efforts? So we got a year till next budget, and we got a strategic plan coming up. Where do we put our efforts, right? Property taxes or sales taxes? So the traditional answer, the book answer is both, of course, because property taxes are relatively stable over time, but sales taxes offer the greatest opportunity for rapid growth, right? Well, I mean, the textbook kind of doesn't apply to here very well. You know, we're a city of 3,000, and, you know, our industry is, you know, has a different allocation than many. So I put it in this context. Property development is great. We are limited in how many spaces we have and what could be put on them. But if I could wave a magic wand and bring in $4 million of property investment a year for the next five years, so each year do a $4 million small commercial project, or residential project, you know, do a, you know, a 10-unit Cassians Field or, you know, something like that, then at the end of the five years, we're gonna get $40,000 more a year in property tax in Nevada City.
Not a lot.
For that $20 million investment, right? $5 million a year, or $4 million a year. $5 million a year, or $4 million a year for five years, $20 million investment, we're going to get $40,000, right?
So, if you have a, let's say, a 60-unit development, you know, that goes in as one project, it's probably going to take a couple of years to get done, that's not going to bring in a significant amount of revenue.
No.
It's the proliferation of box stores.
But sales tax, on the other hand, if we could work to support our current businesses and curate an expansion of businesses that give us a more dynamic portfolio without taking away, and we do that same thing, that $4 million of increase a year for five years, then each year we'd realize $55,000 a year. It'd be 20,000 in sales tax, 20,000 Measure M, 15,000 in Measure C. So, $55,000 a year over the five years, $275,000 versus 40. So, I'm not going to throw away $40,000, but I certainly can't hire a police officer. I can't hire a street work, a maintenance worker. You know, I can hire a minimum wage person with no benefits, right? $275,000, though, that's, yeah, that's two police officers or, you know, four and a half people in your streets crew or.
Makes a big difference.
Absolutely. So, so I hope as we go into the strategic budget process that we need to embrace both, but we need to be realistic about where we invest city dollars to get a return. So, if you've invested city dollars into developing property, it's a long game, and it's not a very lucrative long game.
It takes city time, too, and energy.
Yes. However, if it's housing, and the housing brings people and the people have discretionary income, that translates to sales tax, right? So, it's all on balance. So, TOT. So, our TOT, transient occupancy tax, room tax, whatever you want to call it, hotels, motels, campgrounds, 10%. We also charge it against short-term rentals. It's a voter initiative tax on short-term rentals. We did an initial look at what is out there on the market versus what is complying. And we're somewhere between 25 and 50% noncompliant with the licensing requirements that the city has. They are more compliant with the collection of taxes. Most of them come through VRBO or Airbnb, not all, but most of them do. And so, the actual TOT is being collected. The only way for us to know for sure is to do a comprehensive audit, take what we've already done. We'll use a consultant that has these databases that just work. We'll notice everybody that's in the market. You have to have a business license, you have to be transferring TOT to us. You have to be reporting so that we know that the TOT is accurate. And so, you know, we're looking at a 5% increase in TOT. That's what we're projecting for the next fiscal year budget, which is about $23,000 total. I'm not projecting an increase based on that assessment, but others that have done that assessment, 20%-ish increase in recovered funds, which for us would be about $100,000 a year.
Is that similar to the firm that we talked about?
Exactly, yep. So, essentially, everybody is using the data from one company, and we'll probably go with them, although they sell their data to other companies. And places like HTL, who already does our sales tax, will use that data set and do this work for us. So, it just comes down to how much it costs. So, it's about $3,000 to get the data, which is very inexpensive.
Sure.
But it could run up to $50,000 if you want them to manage your program.
There was a whole upset when they were talking.
That's what we're talking about, yeah.
You know, I've seen, sorry, I've seen a program where it costs $250,000 to run the program. However, it was a Coachella Valley city that an average night stays in the like $3,000 a night stay for a house on the golf course in the, you know, on the Palm Desert area. So, when you're talking about bringing in $30 million a year in TOT, it's probably worth it to spend $250,000. For us, not so much.
As far as, you know, doing an audit for the short-term rentals and looking at who's doing what, is there an ability to go retroactively and sort of say, hey, you guys have been doing this in the last two years, this is what you owe over the last two years?
There is, it's difficult. So, you know, we'll be able to capture some in arrears. Now, the nice thing about that software is that they've been cataloging it, you know, all of this time. So, they have the calendars for all of these locations and what days they were booked and at what rates for a time going back. So, we will absolutely pursue that. It's just whether or not we'll be able to get much in the arrears is.
It's leverage.
Absolutely.
So, on the TOT that you have in this budget, I'm assuming that that does not include the tax sharing with the National Hotels?
It does not. The TOT, the National doesn't pay any TOT currently, and they won't until nine years from now. On the 10th year, they start ramping up over time through the length of the contract paying the TOT. So, that's essentially, they are still, I'm oversimplifying it. But essentially, they're still charging it, but instead of it coming to the city, it's going to pay off their loans. So, it's a way to incentivize someone to redevelop. And I would say that by the time the bar and restaurant are at full capacity, which it looks like will probably be in the next month or so, that the revenue generated there will outpace the TOT generated from the old version of the National Hotels. So, your rate, your return on investment's been good on that, on that deal.
We were counting on that, yeah.
And then, so it's 10 years, and then it ramps up. How long is the ramp-up period?
For the next 20 years.
So, it's 10 and 10, or 10 and 20?
I believe it's 10 and 10, but I'll get, yeah.
Because I heard it was 20 total.
Yeah, 20, 20, 20 total of getting to the full payment, yeah.
That's a lot, I thought it was 20 years to get to.
No. And we're only two or three into the 10.
Yeah.
One. We just have the one-year anniversary.
Business license, I'll get to in a second, but I'm happy to answer the question if you want.
No, I just, so I wanted to number for us who do business licenses the same way we were talking about. Particularly if Airbnb are not compliant with the business license.
Or the ordinance?
Yes, yeah, so, so our short-term rental ordinance is burdensome on city staff. So, when I, remember I said Tanya does all of those things? That's another one of the things she does, right? Business licenses, too, and short-term rental collections and, you know, all of these things. And there's only so much you can do at any given time. So, either leveraging technology or leveraging an outside company to do it would be advantageous.
Great, well, I think we also.
We got you, Tanya.
You know, we have to approach the problem of our whole house rentals that are actually happening within the city that aren't allowed, so.
Yeah, and those are not something that we can plausibly do ourselves.
Right.
You know, the data is there, though, it does list what they're renting.
Great.
Whether it's a room, whether it's the house.
Doug and I had already seen the firm down at the Lea California Cities Conference, and by the time I gave the information to Sean, we already found out that our accounting firm already was partnered with them.
Oh, wow.
And Joan and Sean were already on it. So, it's, yeah, so it's, we've got the abilities out there, it's just making it happen.
Yeah.
And understanding where the give and take is, like, okay, we can't do this internally.
Right.
Outside resources here.
Yep, I have your mic up this way, we're not picking it up in the back. What are you talking?
That's twice, that's twice, Gary, twice.
Thank you.
I think just a lapel mic for Gary.
My wife is sitting up watching this, saying, why did you put the mic up?
Cannabis, so separate from the sales tax that cannabis retailers, so Elevation pays sales tax on, and they pay the state tax, and then they pay our tax, right? So, we tax cultivation, production, retail, and testing of cannabis. We don't have any cultivation currently in the city, although we do have tax structure for it.
Manufacturing, too?
Manufacturing, yeah. Cultivation, production, so, yeah. Yep, production is, yeah, manufacturing. So, that is 4% on our retail and essentially 2% on, all it uses cultivation and based on how many square feet you use of sun-based, light-based, or mixed sun and light-based cultivation. But again, we don't have any of those, so it's basically 4% for retail, 2% for everything else. We're projecting that to be flat, so we see some growth in the industry, but we also know Grass Valley's coming on board once their lawsuit's done. So, altogether, you know, we'll be flat for the year. Business licenses, you know, a Kersher review of that show that most of our businesses do, that our existing businesses do renew. And then the ones that don't, you know, get a letter or a phone call. I talked to someone in Croatia today that, I'm not kidding, that Tanya had called and said, hey, you know, you owe us some money, and they were very nice and called me and said, hey, I'm nine hours ahead, so if you could call me at a different time, I'd appreciate it. But that's great, but that's not a, you know, a sound, reproducible system for re-enrolling folks. So, the biggest thing there is going to be moving to a new software platform and have integration to a new website where these things can be auto-generated by email. Hey, it's time to renew, click on the link, renew on our webpage, you know, pay by credit card, auto-renew, all the things that, modern things that people are used to that make the work of the staff less.
We got you, Tanya.
So, we do project an increase in business license revenues, 22%, which sounds great. It's really $13,000, which sounds less great. That takes us to $100,000 even, which just barely puts us at pre-pandemic levels. So, so we'll build back from there.
We can make up some money from the utilities from the Stone House, right?
Sure, yeah.
Oh, that's way more than that.
So, there's a proliferation, you know, I have a home-based business and I have a business license. There's a proliferation of people who work from home and have home-based businesses. Are we able to, I mean, I don't know if there's any technology that can go after them, but.
There is, and that's, that one is actually easier than you would think because if they're a legal business, right? They've registered, they have a fictitious business name, they have a tax identification number, they have any of these, you know, not ones that are doing $1,000 a year out of, you know, their garage doing something. We're probably never going to catch those, but all the other ones, they're registered with somebody. And so, these same firms do data aggregation of those. They just give us a list of locations, business names. We compare them against our existing list, and then they do a mailing campaign. Hey, you haven't registered, this is the cost, this is your, you know, your late fee because you were operating last year, and remit your payment kind of thing.
Our same firm that we met, does it?
And then you find out who the really deep people are. You'll find that out.
Sometimes you already know.
What is the, and I should know this, what is the fine for noncompliance with a business license?
What's the late fee, $25? Late fee for business license, $25.
And the business license itself is?
100, currently 109? Plus the $4 fee.
That's with the $4.
117 with the $4 state fee. And then, and then it goes up, if you have more than 10 employees, then it's a scale-up from that. And we do allow you a three-year business license with a 5% discount if you choose to do that as well.
But, you know, so I'm a business and I'm thinking that, you know, $25, I'll roll with it, see if they get it, right?
Yes.
So, maybe we.
Would you do that, Doug?
A fee study, what?
You're going to do that?
No, I, I'm just saying theoretically you could do that, right?
So, thank you for saying we're going to do a fee study. So, the city has not adopted a master fee schedule with each budget year. And with the exception of Parks and Rec, because Dawn is on it for her poor pricing, council hasn't adopted anything by resolution since 2017. And so, that will, the fee schedule will come before you next Wednesday at the regular council meeting. So, master fee schedule with the ordinances, resolutions, whatever the enabling action is that allows us to charge it, state law, things like that. So, I won't dive into it tonight.
But that's for existing?
That's for existing fees and any increases that we're recommending.
And we haven't done an analysis there, but there will be some gains there, obviously. Not significant, though, probably in the first.
There could be. There absolutely could be. I would say that we are universally low, and none of ours actually represent our costs of providing these services. So, it's supplemented by everybody else's tax dollars. And you could include everything from, we don't currently have a fee to release a car from impound, correct, Chief? We don't have one at all. So, so that's one that we'll add this year and have a fee, a schedule for, and just simple things, routine things, right?
How often are cars impounded?
More than probably you think.
So, unfortunately, we've had, like for the bike race in the past years, initially for years, we worked it out so that we just towed them to the other side of town, and we didn't charge them because they were here for the race.
Yeah.
But then they, then they started taking them to a facility in Grass Valley, and Grass Valley was charging, but we weren't getting any of that, correct? Because we don't have our own facility. So, if we have fishers come and tow somebody from one of our events, how do we tap into that?
So, they'd have to get a release.
Okay.
To be able to, to release the car, they'd have to come to us, pay the fee. We authorize the release of the vehicle.
You ever had a car towed? I know that's worse.
And I'm not, I'm not looking to, you know, make money off of people, but the reality is, Chief Stecs personnel, we're spending money on their time to make that happen. And today, we don't charge nothing for it, so.
It's a cost. It's one of my things looking at fees, because I'm really concerned about it. Because as you said, they're under, under what they should be. There's a lot of theories and a lot of philosophies on fees, but generally, the idea of a fee is to cover the cost of staff time that it takes to execute or deliver the service.
Right.
That's generally the way. We can make decisions to subsidize those fees with general fund if we choose.
Yes.
However, the more and more we look, I mean, and what that does when you do that, it restricts your general fund capacity because then your general fund becomes restricted based on the overages that you have to provide in order to cover that gap. So, I'm really interested in the fee study and what we look at because across the board, especially particularly if we haven't done one since 2017, and the cost of goods and services and staff time has, those don't stop increasing, well, probably salaries out, but nothing, nothing else has stopped increasing that we have to cover those costs. So, it's really important to give that some serious consideration.
And I apologize if I said it wrong, there was no study done for the 2017. That's just the last time you adopted any resolution that spoke to fees. The most recent study I can find is 2003.
It's, yeah. It's something we have to realize.
But, but staff has been working to, you know, adjust those numbers up based on their actual time, like for example, the, what Amy does with, with planning and, you know, processing permits or, you know, plan review, things like that, how much time it takes, who touches those, you know, those kind of things. So, we have a good idea on many of them where they should be.
Are there any fee, like for the bars in town? You know, cannabis has all these fees and things attached to them. That's not true for the bars, correct?
Not since prohibition was repealed.
Okay, I was just, so they don't have to renew anything or?
They do, they have a business license, but their licensing is through the ABC, the state.
Okay.
So, I said I wouldn't get into fees very much, so, but, and then I did. But one of the big fees that's on there that you have talked about went up, then COVID hit, and it went down, and then we stopped collecting, and then we started collecting, stopped finding is parking fees, right?
Yep.
So, we're, we are working on a, releasing RFP for Parking Demand and Needs Analysis that'll address current configuration of parking, possible expansion, and that'll really serve as a primer for us to set rates as well as looking at, you know, app-based parking, kiosk, credit card collections, all those kind of things.
Surge pricing?
Right, all of those things, right? So, because I don't want to say we should go to $1 an hour, which was previously approved, which I could support all day long, but at the same time, maybe it should be, you know, $1.25, and then you get all those kiosks and all the apps work and all those things. Or maybe it should be 75 cents because, you know, the apps will be more efficient, and we won't have to go collect coins. And so, we're kind of putting the cart before the horse, saying what the fee should be before we do this study.
Or what the facility needs are before we understand the demand.
Yes.
And then the last rates, fees part, and then I'll give it to Victoria in a minute, is water and wastewater rates. So, globally, and Victoria will go over these, but I would say current water wastewater rates, which we call wastewater sewer in the budget, they're insufficient to cover the cost of the services that we provide.
Significantly.
Add to that, that the numbers don't include depreciation. And normally, on an enterprise fund, you would include depreciation. They stopped depreciating in those accounts some time ago. Victoria will get us back up to speed. We didn't show depreciation in what we showed you in this packet just because it would look really funny all of a sudden. But depreciation's not the exact value of the infrastructure decrease in value, but it's, it's a good indicator that if your rates don't even account for depreciation, that you don't have any kind of money to do long-term capital projects, which is true for us. We don't have money to do long-term capital projects.
And if I might add.
And if I might add, in a city with significantly aging infrastructure.
Yes.
And, and there's no, there's no capacity, and the cost of things breaking these days, they talk about something that's gone up. It's kind of scary.
So the logical conclusion for any city manager, seeing what I see in the budget, with the parentheses around the net at the end of our enterprise funds, meaning that they cost the general fund money, would be raise rates. And the natural reaction of any council would be, it sounds good, we don't like to raise rates on our community. So, but it's, it will be a necessity at some point. But again, putting the right order of the cart pulling the horse is what we're doing now. I want to put the horse pulling the cart. We really need to look at our needs and our efficiencies. There is water wastewater master plans. There is infrastructure money coming out to do some of those activities. And then, this is not a real thing, but let me give you a hypothetical. So we spend $150,000 a year on NID water, right, in the summer. We don't pay for that out of the water fund. We pay for that out of the general fund. So that's city taxpayer dollars paying for that water that, then we don't recover through water, water fund. But let's say hypothetically, we could allow NID to take our water rights in the winter, when there's tons of, the water's just flowing into our reservoir and go outside, right, and give us credits so that when we get from them in the summer, we don't pay anything. Or maybe we make a profit off the deal. We don't lose any water in the circumstance. But all things being equal, if we did that, that's less that we'd have to raise rates, right? And so there's a plethora of opportunities to do that kind of thing.
That was already discussed years ago, and the, the past NID director shut the conversation down. So that's, those things we've been looking at.
So Jennifer is the new sheriff in town over at NID, and, you know, she's a former city manager. And so she, you know, she knows the dilemma that, that we're in. And, you know, fortunately, we have people like Brian, you know, behind the scenes that understand the system and what the needs are, and how we can make it better incrementally or in large steps if we were able to get large infrastructure grants. But, so, what I'm saying is that we'll need to discuss that in strategic planning. And I most likely will ask that you create a committee after strategic planning to really look at our water resilience and come up with, you know, actions for council to address, probably in the spring of 2023, before we would do the rate study and make any changes in, in that regard. So one more year at these rates would be a good investment of the taxpayer dollars to make sure that we're doing it right with the right measurement of the needs of the system.
And also, you know, with, talking about NID, having a, what is our contract? Are we under contract with them, or they just saw it and said, oh?
Yeah, so we do have a contract. It was...
They thought we renewed that, right?
It's an agreement more than...
We had a previous, it is an agreement. We had a previous agreement that was very robust. It was rescinded at the city's request, I believe in 2013.
We went up to a month, a month.
And, and now we have basically what's called a, a surplus raw water contract. It's the, we'll give it to you if we have it. Now, in practical terms, under California law and the Health and Safety Code, they couldn't turn water off to us because we are, yeah. Even though they're selling it to us at, you know, as an ag rate, essentially, we are making it into potable water. So they can't really turn us off. But from the truest sense, they don't have a big surplus, you know, and we should be closer in line than ag customers. Not trying to be mean, it's just, you know, drinking water comes before watering the plants. It's just, you know, practical terms.
And, and somebody said this, and maybe it was from council, if they just dump the water in the creek, and then we don't get it in the canals, they just dump it in there, and we get maybe 50% of the water they supply to us?
Yeah, so the DS canal that's right above the, the reservoir, right, can, can, has, has piping connection to the reservoir. But they shut that canal down in October, Brian. And then we get water from further up. And they do, they just put it, you know, downstream for us to, to recover into our...
For the losses, you know, when you do that.
Yeah, so you lose to atmosphere, you lose to, you know, surface infiltration and, you know, those kind of things. So, so that would be, that's ripe for a project right there, just to build a piping project to make those connections.
Right.
And even better if NID doesn't for us.
Well, there are grants out there too that...
I, I think though, that the important thing here is that we really need to realign our relationship with NID.
Oh, without a doubt.
You know, because, I mean, there's, it, it works both ways. We have water rights also.
Right.
And they also have shortages. And what we need to do is get in the right business relationship with NID on our water.
Yeah, and they're, well, and we're, they're doing their 50-year water plan right now, right? And so we're involved behind the scenes on that and, you know, trying to be good players. And, you know, that, to your point, that's what we need to do.
But we are sitting in a completely good position, because we do have water rights here. And...
As long as water is in the, where the water runs.
Right, but...
We are, there is, there are, they call the drought, okay?
Yeah.
Yes, as opposed to Grass Valley, who is exclusively dependent on NID to give them raw water for them to put through their treatment plant to make into potable water.
Yeah. No, they don't. So I'm just saying, we, we're sitting in a very different position. And I...
Good, it's, yes, we are. We're sitting in a different, but not a good position.
Well, nobody's in a good position in drought.
So a couple of things on expenditures, and I really will give it to Victoria. So we had...
Means we're not yet 40% through.
Exactly. We're still, we're still in a disaster from the storm.
I mean, I love this.
We're, we're in a disaster from the storm, end of December last year. I'll ask you to renew that next week, because we haven't got any reimbursements from it yet, and we still have. We have about $1 million in expenditures, give or take, and probably a couple hundred thousand dollars more that, that could be coming. And then some of that is, has insurance claims, the mill building and things like that. That, most of that money came out of, comes out of what would be Measure M. It's related to the right-of-way, not all of it. We anticipate a 75% recovery on that money from the state. And so ultimately, in the budget process, that will get returned to the fund of origin. So you may see some large transactions in there, and that look funky, that's, that's why those, especially if you look at the, if we do a budget amendment in the year. On expenditures, utility and fuel costs are absolutely going to go up. Our service contracts for IT, law enforcement dispatch, and LAFCO all have increasing fees. Our fire contract goes up 3% in October, so not the whole fiscal year. 3% is what the contract increases. Materials, of course, have gone up. Our CalPERS unfunded liability sits at about 6.1 million right now. And everyone's like, oh, 6.1 million. It was 170 million in my previous life.
Pretty good.
So I, I don't love the number, but I'll, I'll take it. It's manageable, right? So our unfunded, our UAL, unfunded actuarial accrued liability goes up by 7.4%. We got to pay the per se rate on it, to 494,000 and change this year. It goes up by about 24,000. We can get a 5% discount, overcome that $24,000 increase by prepaying it. So we'll do that by pre, in a lump sum prepayment. And then the last piece is, you know, our employees are our greatest asset. They translate our tax dollars to direct services. But their salary benefits and other costs are about 70% of our total budget. It's pretty normal for cities. That's about 3.7 million of our budget. And all the bargaining at MOU's expire this year. So between step raises, added cost of filling vacancies, and potential contract costs, we do anticipate employment costs rising this year. And so we factor for that in the budget as well. Now, I really will give it to Victoria, and I'll start pulling up the spreadsheet so that you can see them.
Is this a, a breaking point for questions from the public?
From anybody, yep, absolutely.
So anybody at the table, any more questions? Anybody in the public want to ask anything on the first section of tonight's presentation? Okay. Do you want to check virtually?
I do, thank you.
Just to be safe?
We have people, so if there is anybody that would like to ask a question on anything we've covered so far, that's in the Zoom world, if you want to raise your hand, or press star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone. Couple folks in there, but no raised hands.
Okay, let's move forward to section two then. So take your time.
Of course.
Will you take mine? I have a...
I, I, I've got a cup.
You can have the whole thing.
I've got a water bottle.
Anybody want more snacks or anything?
So you have the packet in front of you, or did somewhere, and then...
Water pitcher?
And then you can, you could also look on your device.
I've got my device, I'm not sure if you got it.
And...
Do I have two? I have two. Would you take mine, God?
I don't know. I just, no, I saw I had double of something. He's got it.
Thank you.
Hold it. Let's see if I can find the napkin.
Is Danielle, are you sure that's water?
I don't know. I have a quiet voice.
It's on.
So I don't know if people back there will be able to hear me. Can you hear me? Okay. So you probably, I don't know if you've all had a chance to glance at the financial reports, and you can probably off the bat see they're a little bit different from what you've looked at before. And one of the things that I tried to do, if, if you peeked at the summary of expenses, and this is the form that they use before, they were built by all of these departments. And there's 16 of them. And what they did before is provided you a summary of all 16 departments. And when Sean and I looked at these, and we sort of concurred on this, it might be more useful if we have, if we summarize some of those, because they, they go together and give you more detail, or give you both, give you a summary and sort of a graph that shows some general trends, and then provide the detail behind it, so that you can have more information and a little more understanding of, of all of those departments, hopefully. So...
I like it.
So what I'm going to do is go through these 16 departments that are actually consolidated into eight. For example, the general government, there wasn't any need for that. But the governing, I call it the governing department, which includes attorney, includes city planner, includes city manager, and treasurer, which we'll have going forward. But it consolidates all that. You can still look behind the, the summary and see the detail. But we don't have a million disjointed budgets summarized that, I don't know, when I first looked at it, I couldn't put a context to it, because it was just sort of out there on its own. Fire department is the same, police department's the same. But public works, we consolidated the building rounds with streets, because the personnel, as Sean pointed out, 70% of our person, our costs are personnel. So it kind of makes sense to, that actually may not be a good example, because there are capital outlays, et cetera. But, so we, we consolidated those two. Park and rec, we consolidated camp and pool and park and rec. And we'll no longer have the veterans hall, so that's gone. And then water consolidated both the water distribution as well as the water plant. And sewer, the same thing. It consolidated sewer collection, collection and the plant. So we can look at it together. And it was more useful to look at in terms of the fees we charge and how it's covering our costs. And that'll be sort of the last little piece of the puzzle we'll look at. So real quickly, I'm going to start with governing. And if you take a glance at the summary, you can see between, and, and I created a new spreadsheet, because down here, I organized it by account category over the four years. But I think it makes more sense to look at the four years with each account category separate. So for the governing council, there wasn't a whole, there's not a, a real big swing between, in particular, that approved 21, 22 by that and what we're proposing for next year. There is, however, if you look at the projections for 2021, and if, if I were you, I would look at this compensation, which is high. I'd say, okay, what's that about? And if you want, you can pull up the, the detail, and you can see that for the projections, they actually went up. And that has a lot to do with the turnover. And you probably are more aware than anybody about that. And, and contractual obligations for severance and contractual obligations with medical and things like that, vacation payout. So when you have turnover, it does cost a lot of money. So that's one way of just sort of glancing at the differences. Pull up the detail. The accounts are listed here too. And so in the future, when we start talking about a budget to approve, we can... What's that? Why is that doing that? They're probably adjusting.
He's in the back room. You're, no, you're okay. Just leave it there. He'll, he'll adjust.
All right. So we'll be able to refer to each of these accounts. So clear.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So anyway, in general, I think the highlight of this particular governing accounts is that the flat between 21, 22, 21 tied in terms of compensation, mainly because of that turnover in that, I would say, 40% of the turnover. And that's the one big way with that.
Council salary was really high that year.
I know. No, it wasn't. I don't remember that. You weren't here yet.
General government is the next category. And that, as you can see from the role picture, the graph, has been brought to the table. The yellow part that, that was underneath right even, that's about allocating out a certain percentage of cost to each of our departments that help cover the federal grant reporting or the reimbursement reporting that we have in the other departments.
Okay.
That covers staff time for reporting? That covers staff time for reporting?
It's essentially our indirect costs.
Yes.
So it's, we're billing each department a portion of Victoria and Tanya and Gabby and Brittany.
You're doing that by 86 or?
Yes, 87, yeah.
Yeah, 87 is worth calling, exactly. And it's useful because I know many grants will allow you 20% allocation of any department. Some will like...
25, maybe.
And you can see here too, if you look at the detail, the majority of the highest percentage of expense, if you add the compensation and that, et cetera, et cetera, it's, it's indirect, it's administration, it's human services, it's talent. So that's not... And the next one, fire department. Of course, this one looks different over time, mainly because of our con, our contract with... because of our contract with Rastell, which you more know more about than I do, I'm sure. But the picture that you receive online is, okay, so the operating costs, lion's share, that's four seventy-three, forty-seven thousand seventy-three, that is paid for out of the general fund for one division chief salary and maintenance. There are a few little costs. Now, historically, they put a debt service in there, and I have to look, it's probably a vehicle, I'm seeing, of some sort, or a truck. So it's still there, and that's another big, that's another big chunk, that's all it is. And again, you can just look at this sheet, and if you have a question about fifty-two, eighteen, which we call outside services, and that's Rastell contact, or if you have a question about fund debt service, we can call it outside, we can call it the same page. The next one we're looking at here is fire department, down to the park and rec. Like so many, this one, it's, this one is not flat. And the big reason is that this looks at their historical COVID impact.
Yeah.
And there it is. Regular parts, we didn't have a camp, the pool was not, wasn't even open?
No, no events.
Yeah, no events. The veterans hall now, we don't have any, but you can see at a glance the impact of maybe, we didn't hire the part-time people over the summertime. Operations was much lower. So where did you back up the speed here? The approved budget between twenty-one and twenty-two is pretty much flat, but the approved budget became, also proposed budget between twenty-one. We kept it that way, but this year, there are many changes, I'm sure, that's true. And then you could look at the, some of the minor changes there are, I think there were just small purchases that relate to the pool, I think it was the cover from the pool, we're talking about heat in the pool, heating twenty-two, twenty-three.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so there's that in the background.
So we do heat the pool, but we had masters swimming over the winter. And so if we continue that this year, there's a substantial cost there. But we'll offset it with revenues. But it increases our expenditures as well. They pay, they pay for their days, yeah.
And another one that someone may have a question on, is fifty-two, fifty-two, it's not an expense, that's a purchase expense, and they've been spending money by their parking lot in three weeks, and they all feel like they've done it. It was probably approved, recall, in last year's budget. Okay, so the next one we'll look at is the police department. And this shows, I like this stuff. Relatively the same going forward, just all on the opposite end, so it looks like the way inflation happens. Not a, not a huge there, the color is all related to the new compensation benefits. It is, is the order, as far as within, as you'd expect with any police department.
You can't hear me?
It's not being recorded very well, as the IT guy says.
Okay.
We'll get your boom mic.
I don't have a loud question. So, anyway, so the biggest part of our expense, which are the police, the people who are majorly involved in our, in the state. And again, with that, we have the detailed timing. So when we do start confirming, when you start confirming and approving, working out individual accounts in our final budget process, you can always access, you can always ask questions and we can all be on the same page. Because I, I can't imagine having to do it anyway. So the next category I have here is public works. And what, and what I did is I combined streets with, with the building and maintenance because it's pretty much the same staff that goes into. And, and there, unlike some of the other departments, there are quite a few expenses and operations, and that all has to do with maintenance of this infrastructure that the city just had. So its picture looks a little bit different. Capital out, it is capital outlay, which is different. It's in a general fund, so it won't become an asset because general fund is the whole asset, I mean, that's just an aside. But the operating expense, you can see, is weighed out, and that's a pattern that's, that's sort of, it goes along with what streets and, and building and maintenance would be. So again, if you look at the detail, you will see account, probably fifty-two, eighteen, outside services, that's a lot of maintenance. There's, there's a high insurance liability because we're covering the costs of buildings and infrastructure. And so the whole pattern of this particular department does look better, uh, different from the other departments. We are spending money in, in infrastructure, building, so. And if you have questions about where we're spending it, again, you can look at the accounts. And when you find and go through the process of approving a final budget, we can be on the same page. Next, I guess, this is the last of, of the general government funds. I think we'll turn now to the enterprise funds, is what they're called. They're really for profit type, or they look more like a for-profit balance sheet.
Not concurrently making a profit, but they're configured that way.
Well, a lot of for-profits, a lot of for-profits don't make profits. So I started with this page that does sort of summarize it for us because it's a page, and I think you had this in, in the last budget process in last December, January. It, it shows the revenues that, that the sewer fund, this is sewer fund, is bringing in, and the total expenses of both the collection and the plant. And of course, it's upside down. And this is not a real fair, if you look at it, not real fair analysis from seventy-eighteen to our proposed twenty-two, twenty-three. Because these first few months, they actually were putting depreciation in there, and then it stopped. And for purposes of comparison, just for this workshop, I left it out as they started here back in your adopted budget of twenty-two, twenty-one. So if you add another four hundred thousand degrees.
That would be correct, or?
That would be correct. Because I think Sean pointed out that four hundred, actually, it's four hundred and sixty-three, it's more than one hundred thousand, represents structures that are deteriorating and will need to be replaced.
Right.
And we need to think about how that happens. And as Sean pointed out, right now, the negative force is the cash, is not affecting, which is, I suspect why we put depreciation out. So it's not that four hundred and some sixty-three thousand every year is meant to be cash from now, at some point.
It's going to.
It's, yeah. And so if we just look at the spend structure, it hasn't really climbed high. Now, these last two are just approved and proposed budgets, they're not actuals. And in the projections, there was less activity in, again, in COVID. And in this particular fund, they do spend a lot in terms of, and this is something that I was thinking about, capital outlay, three hundred and seventy thousand was approved in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. And what happens with that capital outlay, and I just did it for twenty-one year, is it becomes an asset. So really, you know, it's, it's purchasing or replacing some of these places. So I guess that's not the bad thing, but we're not doing that with sewer company necessarily. Do I understand what you mean? Yeah.
So you were talking about the expenses that are projected for twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three. We're going up, we're projecting a four hundred thousand dollar increase, is that because of their specific maintenance needs, or?
If you look at it, they were not, well, yeah, there's a huge increase, let's look at compensation, in other words, the detail. There's a large increase between twenty-one, over a hundred thousand, and the approved budget in twenty-one, twenty-two, the approved budget, which is relatively flat in twenty-two, twenty-three. And that was because they were not fully staffed during COVID.
Right.
So that's reflected there. But the operating expenses are, because last year, eight seventy-four, they were not a big, one thing she doesn't, that, and, well, frankly, that's why it was going to sixty-five thousand, so that's not there. So there were, yes, they, if you took forty to sixty-five thousand, you were flat.
So you're asking about our current budget or our previous years when we jumped up to four hundred thousand?
Well, you're jumping up this year and then next year, we're jumping up four hundred thousand dollars each.
We're, we're relatively flat this year.
That's because of depreciation, or?
No.
Um, no, we're jumping up this year mainly, I think, because of the capital outlay. And, and some of it is a personnel increase because we were understaffed. And capital outlay, which actually, with measure M, is partially covered by, measure M now going forward, unlike measure S, it covers a lot of the same way.
So we have a decreased budget from our current adopted budget?
Yes.
To the projected budget for twenty-two, twenty-three?
Yes.
Is a decrease.
So the good news about that is this three hundred and seventy thousand.
It's from one nine four nine to one nine two seven. The, the jump came from twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-one to twenty-one, twenty-two.
Right.
That's the, that's the big jump. We're flat now, but.
Yeah, but the biggest part is that increase of staff because we're, we're going to be fully staffed again, and the anticipation of measure M. That's where that's coming from. But, and that's good because once again, that outlay becomes an asset on the enterprise ones' books. And it's not coming out of our general fund, it's not a good deal.
Yep, it is.
I think we have cleared our five, we have serious windows that are allocated.
Oh, yeah, historically, they come down here and stay in counties. Their account under fifty.
Are there projects in your mind, so they let us spend the money on projects?
Oh, nice.
But that.
To achieve compliance.
The water board did that?
They like us.
Brian's got a good relationship.
So I think part of the take home, though, is if you look at this one, the summary page, when you look at that, we jumped from one point five million to one point nine million, our revenue went up by ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's.
That's, that's the crux of our challenge, so.
Yeah, regulatory issues and requirements, like. When I, when you talk to Mike.
They never get easier.
And more expensive. And chlorine and all sorts of chemicals and things that they have to buy are getting more expensive. So that's something they're dealing with and will have to deal with. So then the next enterprise fund, of course, is the water fund. And the water fund, and Sean mentioned this in his presentation, visually you can see what happened with the water fund in twenty-two, twenty-one. There's a drought. Not only did we have COVID, we had a drought. So we went out and we had to pay, you look at account number, it's fifty-two, ten. We went from paying fifty thousand dollars a year before, or this, the actual was a hundred six, but we paid a hundred thirty-seven thousand. And we also went for outside services, it was to repair pipes and buy the quality pieces, more than I can, but when I ran the detail here, it looked like a lot of it was repairing this water with outside services, with engineers, with, I don't know, the building in there, there were contractors in there, so. And I think they probably, they survived, they couldn't pour the water out of the water and they were repairing everything in a fix. So in that particular year, we did have real high operating expenses. But we had, again, it's COVID, we had low relative to the other following years, we had lower staff costs. That is, is a snapshot of what COVID and drought did to our budget.
Your cost of personnel is much lower than you see in, in most water, wastewater operations. I was just gonna say, the far right column, the projected budget in water shows us seventy-seven thousand dollars. But realizing that, that doesn't include budget to pay NID for water in the summer.
No, it does the A D.
So, so the difference will be made up from the general fund, so you'd eat that up right away. But still, we're close to break even, but we have no money to do, no, no money in this fund on a recurring basis to do projects, right? So it's both, it's operations and maintenance and the replacement of infrastructure over a long period of time. And Brian and the team have done a wonderful job of cobbling together money and making things work with an incredibly antiquated system, and I mean that in the best of terms. It's cool, it's really neat, it's old and it still functions, and not a whole, a whole lot of hundred and thirty-year-old, you know, water infrastructure systems that still work like ours do, but, you know, we need to keep moving that number to the positive.
And with, do you, do you have, if you were, obviously, you have a little appreciation? The appreciation there is one ninety, and, and just like the other one stopped, China depreciation, that's in here, the rest is unmarked, there wasn't a number. Could be.
Okay, finish up.
I don't know, it could be just because I know whenever I pull appreciation out, it's because we want to look at cash flow more than anything. And I know at the end of the year, the water department doesn't have a communication with cash flow.
How is, how is the communication conduit with Mike now, water wastewater? That's, that's one. That's, that's one, you know, one of our departments that historically, going years back, we've had the least amount of direct contact with and knowledge of. And he's, when I met with Mike, he seems like he's got a lot of great ideas too, is that?
He does, and he's got a long-term plan, he's working with, um, with, with Brian on. We're gonna start trying to not repair that, but reintroduce that as a city function. It's, it's hard for them because they're in two different places on, you know, one's outside the city in Limits, one's in the, you know, in the forest, right up against the Deer Creek, right? And so you just don't see them. But we have, um, water quality report coming up, um, we have several other reports, um, coming up. We have, um, a new, um, operating permit that we're gonna get from the state that is, tells a very good story of, of things, um, that we're doing. And so we're trying to bring that narrative back to you to demonstrate the, the value you get out of, um, what's going on. But the, you know, at the end of the day, there's the monetary component as well.
Right, I understand. Just wanna make sure his, his department's in the middle of the mix now, brought back in and, um, you know, it's, it's so easy to forget about them in the past, so.
And I would say that's, that's all Mike and Brian, that's them trying to build a team and get good people and retain them and develop them. And, um, it's, it's a, it's a good model for, um, what, what Mike has going on out there.
Right. How long has it been since we've raised water rates? Yeah, that's what I, well, I'm just saying that, you know.
So you picked the right one, you raised wastewater but not water?
Right.
Which was good, um, because wastewater was further upside down, but you didn't raise it enough, not you, um, but.
Well, you kind of voted for it, so.
Yeah.
Um, I know, and it's, it's a hard thing to do to the, the people in our community. We're all gonna pay more, but we gotta pay for it.
Pay for the city.
Yep.
So how long have we reduced, uh, water uses?
I, yeah.
Yeah, and Brian's working on the, the, um, the well system to irrigate at, um, at the park.
Pioneer Park?
And we have other wells and we can look at other projects with that and, you know, someday maybe we'll work selling.
That could save us actually a lot of money.
Non-odible pumped ag water to, you know, the people that are doing whatever their project is.
So we've gone through this cycle though, it seems like we've learned the hard way twice in my twelve years here, where we agreed that we had to start incrementally increasing things. Instead of this, put it off, act like we're being friendly with everybody and then we nail them in ten years. And we've agreed to do it, but then it seems like we don't do it. And depending on how the council mix is made up, we keep getting folks that just feel like we, we just can't do that and we have to, we know that. Just have to make it happen, so, you know.
I appreciate that, um, it's good to know the history. Um, at the end of the day, um, we'll do all the legwork, hopefully with a committee from the council to get to the right system and what the pricing of that system is. And inherently, there will eventually be rate increases, everything goes up, um, over time. And then when you get there, we'll have a good enough track record that even if you're not comfortable in, in, you know, saying it outright, you can say, well, you know, the city manager's been beating the drum, it's his fault, that's okay, I'll take the, I'll take the beating at the Prop two eighteen hearing. But, um, you know, um, we have to do it right so that, you know, it, to your point, it's, it's the right plan for the long term. It's not all at once, it's incremental, but, um, but we do, we will need to do it. But we'll need to build the narrative so that everyone understands that.
Is there any, um, thoughts about doing smart meters for water?
Absolutely, and, uh, meters in general are a, a, a challenge for us and they've done a great job of replacing ones.
But they could also save us money.
They can, and they're very expensive. So I, I, the, we did a wholesale, um, twenty-eight thousand customer, um, project down there. They were right around thirty-eight hundred dollars a meter?
Yep.
For the meter, that's not installed, um, so.
We're doing one for a city right now, so I just wanted to.
Yeah. It's ripe for a grant, not for a general fund.
Right, I was gonna say, wow.
Well, we have, you have to remember too, some of you haven't gone through the, the cycles when PG&E had the smart meters. Again, you have to look at our community backlash too, and the anti-smart meter folks, and, and it became a nightmare. PG&E backed off for a while and it cost us more money. So we always have to take all that into consideration with our unique eclectic community members. When we rented here, there was a clause in our lease that we couldn't have a smart meter. And he, he paid the difference, he paid the, you have to pay a fee every month when you don't use a smart meter, that's a radiation. So just keep that in mind.
Well, here's, you know, one thing I've read about the water smart meters is, you know, the city knows you have a leak before you know you have a leak. So, you know, we are.
Exactly, that's exactly right, that's why I make huge benefits. We're not, yeah, we're, we're not, uh, discussing the, uh, the pros and cons of the meter.
No, I know, it's just that there is so much, you know, with drought and everything else that.
So I think that'll be part of the discussion when we get that committee together. We look at the master plans that, that Brian already has, the projects, the, the infrastructure needs that are already there. I think you, whoever's on that committee will be impressed with, um, the depth of analysis that's already been done and, um, and what we'll need to do to, you know, kind of bring it up to speed, so.
Because even now, Shane, I think, don't, don't you, you guys, you're able to come by and just kind of tap it with that wand and look?
Yeah, I think I've created some, uh, some, uh, some, uh, some, uh, hour by hour.
Yeah.
I love that.
Slowly move forward, but we have it glued here, but without that, that's what.
Because a few years ago, I mean, they, we still had to stop and lift the lid on every meter and read it visibly, so, yeah.
You don't have to do that anymore, but those meters are.
So it's still a little, little band-aid. We'll get the money, Shane.
And I think we have one more, um.
One more. And I think in the budget, we, we do have more general, like, government funds. As you know, I think they refer to seven, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, or forty-seven hundred, or, um, and those are actually government funds too, to this special. But the last one we have here is the measure C, which helps my safety.
Oh, this is the point three seven five.
Um, and, 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 and if you look at it, of course, it does cover. So the measure C covers four, forty-six, seventy-five, and covers the budget for twenty-one, uh, twenty-two, and twenty-three. Covers that, adds a fire department, and covers one, twenty-five, forty-five, um, for years in the approved, proposed budget. Now, the place, so, um, and it's part of the, uh, the health support, safety, and, um, safety.
That's awesome. So effectively, this funds, um, one police officer and the relative proportion of the Grass Valley contract that was previously funded before. If you notice the number on the right, um, we're projecting a relatively large, and we're gonna double back on this, but a relatively large increase. The approved budget number is lower than actuals for twenty twenty, um, two, um, and it'll be flat going into twenty twenty-three. But again, it'll be an increase, so that looks like a net of one twenty-four. This can only be used for public safety, um, so this is where, as we build this over time, you could add another police officer using this funding. You could add a, a C S O, um, you could, you could offset some more of, um, the fire contract. But the way it is set up today is it's relatively stable, it's got a three percent escalator, um, in the contract. Um, there will be some costs for, for enhancements in there, but not tremendous. So really, you're stable with your fire contributions from this. As it grows over time, it'll allow you to augment your, your police forcing. So when you voted to, um, retain and enhance, this is one of the funding mechanisms for the enhancement. Yes, yes.
So, um, small, small things.
Thank you so much, Victor. This was great.
So clear.
It was informative and now I, we know everything. This is a beautiful.
It was a pain.
He said that to me earlier.
It really is.
And this isn't even our budget, this is just our.
I know, but it's, it's, it's. I love just going through it and going, oh my God, this is so great, because I understand it, I, you know, going back and forth, thank you.
You had it ready to go.
I'm sorry, I missed the line item for the council compensation.
Yeah.
Twenty-six thousand.
So we, before you go, any other questions again from the audience? Anybody at the table?
Um, and then we do have someone online. Matt, you, go ahead.
About the vets hall, why is it gone now? Why are we not getting revenue from it? The county took it back.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a.
Well, it's actually COVID has, and they didn't use it at all.
Well, they didn't take it back, we offered it back.
Yeah.
It's a.
It's a county facility that we were.
I've, I've heard like six different things, what's going on?
It's a county facility that we were running, both on the revenue and expenditure side and during COVID. For whatever reason, um, it was given back to the county to, to operate.
It wasn't being used.
So we, so we no longer have expenses nor revenue generated from that facility.
So the county. So the city of Nevada City is no longer going to use that facility for anything?
At this point, no.
Well.
It doesn't mean it's not going to be used, uh, it's just, uh, it's the county operation.
We are not managing it at this point like we were.
And what about the connection with the shelter and the bottom, the warming shelter?
That will remain the same.
Yeah, that's, that's all county.
That is not changing.
Yep. Okay, very good. And on the sewage treatment plant, the money that was fine for that, that was turned back into repairs, has that been completed?
What, what now?
All, all the repairs in, in, uh, all the projects in lieu of fines are completed, correct? Yeah. Yes, Matthew, they are.
Okay, very good. Yeah, that's it, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
That is all we have.
Okay. So we'll close public comment again at this point on what we just went through. Turn it back over to staff.
So, um, my twenty percent, I will convert it to shorter, um, so, yeah. Yes.
Thank you.
Her part's more important anyway, but.
Yeah.
So I wanted to cover reserve funds, because it's always this nebulous, where's the money, right? Everyone always says we don't have any money. And so, you know, I wish that we did, um, reserve accounting in gold balloons, um, because then you, you just have a safe and you just have them stacked up and it's like, hey, there's fifty-seven gold balloons in there, you know that they're there. If you count them, it's easy, you know? I did check the bas, the basement, I didn't check Bill's basement. No, so, um, our reserve funds in general are separating the categories from the governmental accounting standards board, it's commonly called G A S B. You'll see a G A S B fifty-four report, um, and generally, it has to do with, um, our audit and position in these. So they break it down into non-spendable funds, restricted funds, committed funds, assigned funds, and unassigned funds. Seventy-five percent of all of our reserve funds, or of the nearly seven million dollars that we have in reserve funds, is in restricted and non-spendables. So in the spreadsheet that I put in there, um, you'll see those. Prior to the current fiscal year, you only recognize three general fund reserve accounts, operational reserves, pension reserves, vehicle replacement. Um, with this current adopted budget, um, you replaced it with six new accounts. So we're proposing to reallocate from those three existing to the six newly created in this budget. And then in your previous year's budgets, you carried a very large unassigned, um, reserve fund balance. So basically, it's just money that slushes, is there. Uh, for purposes of this budget, we're gonna, um, assign a million dollars of that, um, to reserve accounts. So as proposed, our revenue reserve, which is really your, um, your, something goes bad, uh, the recession's worse than we anticipated, things like that. That's what that one really is. Our reserve, our, our revenue reserve will be one point one four four million or twenty percent of our total budgeted funds. When you include the one point two seven five million, we invest that are currently listed as unspendable. Because they're invested, we'd have to sell them to get them out. But they are available assets in, um, you know, a downturn, then our reserve funding, um, revenue reserve funding is almost forty-five percent of the budget. So fifty percent is a very good target. Joan indicated a hundred percent, I agree, that's a better target, uh, but it's, uh, every season, fifty percent is much more than, than you'll find in many, many cities in that specific account. The employee benefit reserve, as budgeted, will go to two hundred fifty thousand or fifty percent of the city's total liability. So this is, um, what if everyone won the Lotto and retired today? We'd have to cash them out for their vacation and, and, you know, all of these leave balances and stuff. So it's better to say won the Lotto and retires than to say, you know, any other separation condition. But, you know, people come and people go, right? Um, and we hope to, you know, recruit, hire, retain and develop, um, great people, and we have a great team, um, right now. But at some point, everybody leaves and they cash out some of their vacation, so, um, so that's what that is. The capital improvement reserve is only a hundred thousand dollars, that's probably the last bucket that you would fill. Because that's general fund dollars for capital. So if we're gonna use that, and we will fill it up over time, that's a leveraging tool or matching funds for grants and other things so that we can secure, you know, we can, it's a force multiplier, basically. Uh, vehicle and equipment replacement reserve will go to a hundred fifty thousand or about twenty-five, uh, percent of our liability. Our litigation reserve will be a hundred twenty thousand, which is, uh, our highest annual loss in claims history. We also have several other monies in reserves, um, that account for our self-insured retention and other things in that regard to our insurance pools. Um, and then the community fund reserve is twenty-eight thousand dollars, which is our average agency amount that you see in the budget, the amount that we give to, um, support various activities. So, movies under the pines and it's like that. Also, in the proposed budget, we will have it carried forward. We'll, we'll get the exact dollars by the time we, um, do budget, but if we said it was approximately five hundred thousand dollars. In normal conditions, under your policies that you adopted this year, the first place you would take that money is put into reserves. But with this reallocation of reserves, um, we're accounting for, um, essentially that. And instead of, in this case, taking that money and putting it into the vehicle replacement reserve fund, instead, we'll just use it as it was intended in the first place, carry it forward to next year's budget and buy those cars. So, for example, so it looks something like a police car and a, a, a truck for Public Works and a truck for, um, the, um, for the, uh, water wastewater, um, and then, um, and then the, um, build the unfunded portion of the city's technology and webpage upgrade, so that that's fully funded, ready to go, push play once we get the, the right ones done. So that's what we intend to do with carryover money, not put into those reserve buckets because of, because look. They don't look remarkable, but that, that is what they are. And so I don't say this to, um, this isn't a brag, this isn't a good thing, a bad thing, it's nothing. There's almost seven million dollars in those reserve funds in total when you add up the unspendables all the way through the unassigned. And so, um, it's important that we share that information so that it's, doesn't appear that we're hiding anything, whether it's from our employees or from the community or whatever it is. That is taxpayers' dollars that are used, you know, uh, that are given to the cities to invest to make services. And so a large portion of the unassigned money, and even some of the assigned money, is used, um, as cash flow, right? So it's a point in time, we have that when we create the budget and then afterwards, we, you know, spend it until we get more money. Comes in sales tax, property tax, of those kind of things. But, um, it would be just disingenuous for me to say that there's not a large amount of money in our checking account, because there has to be for us to be able to pay the bills on the go forward, and that's what that represents. So, um, you know, as the years go by and you see those numbers more and more, we'll fill up those buckets. And, you know, but eventually, there'll be projects and actions that go along with them. So when you say, we filled up to a hundred percent, now what do we do with it? You know, um, it's, well, we lease purchase all of our new vehicles and we pay the debt out of that fund. And then every year, we fill it up so that seven years down the road, we can do it again, um, that kind of flavor.
Thanks for explaining that.
So, so that, I know six million or seven million dollars, that's a lot of money, but it is, it's more our annual operating budget, but, um, you know. Yeah, yes, Brian could, one project he could, you know, like that, it'd be an amazing project, but it's one and done, right?
One pipeline, right?
Well, I think before I was elected, we used to borrow money ahead from the county at low interest to have our spending money, and then a couple of us got in, I think the first second year I was in, we shut that down and were able to flip it for break even, but that was scary.
Still a, a common practice for special districts in this county. So their, their fund balance is zero coming into the new year. So, um.
Really centered for Washington, they have no special one district.
Yeah. So the last thing is just authorized personnel, um, list, and so we're basically flat with that. Um, the chart reflects that we lose the city treasure, because July one, we no longer have the city treasure. July, uh, July one, twenty twenty four for clerk.
Oh.
Yeah, uh, he'll, his term runs through twenty twenty four. And, um.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
So the, so the treasure responsibility be absorbed by, um, me and Victoria, if it goes well, credit to her, but bad blame it on me. And, um, there's a realignment in the budget of maintenance worker one, the maintenance worker two. So currently, um, we have heavy on maintenance worker one, we anticipate trans, those people that, that with us for all going to be. Worker two and the same for water, wastewater, uh, operator training, going to water wastewater operator two, um, because they're all passive tests. Mike's doing a great job training those folks out there, just like Shane's training folks. Um, number of part-time personnel effectively remains the same. Um, the police lieutenant position, which has been frozen, is in the budget, funded in the budget, we don't anticipate filling it. We, you know, the chief will come in and work on how community policing is going to go, what retain and enhance really looks like, but it's in there. You know, we don't want to shortchange it and it's not funded and then we're trying scrambling for the money later. The same is true for their full-time position of public works, I mean, it's called lead worker, um, it's currently funding part-time positions, uh, but that may, you know, if we found the right configuration, it may just wouldn't like fill that.
How short are we in public works?
Uh.
Right now?
Short, we're, we're down two full-time bodies.
Okay.
And, but we have one, hopefully starting to, this past background, right?
Yep.
Another that Shane is trying to see if he can, um, persuade, persuade to join us. Um, he might be, you know, for the love of digging ditches, he might be taking a cake and scrubbed up to, um, for, you know, joining our team. Um, so, and then we're also, um, out for recruitment for an operator, um, at, uh, for water wastewater, um, for a person that, a, a, a great, um, uh, you know, team member, a good contributor, but left us to go to another agency. So we'll be filling that spot there.
And we have somebody out on, uh, workers, uh, on personal, uh, is there still somebody on workers, contractors that still?
We do have a, a position that is filled at water wastewater for somebody that's not.
I'm glad to hear we're actually giving people, because everybody's having such a hard time finding people to work, so. I know, I know.
So that's, uh, that's our story for tonight, I'm eight hour, or eight hours, eight minutes, um, over what time? I said we would be, um, but we certainly, Mr. Mayor, happy to answer any questions, take any direction notes, anything.
So I don't want to throw a curveball at you, I didn't clear this with you, I should have, but. Can we offer at least do any of our departments, uh, want to come up and say anything about this at all?
Of course.
You don't have to, but, uh, fire, I mean. Yeah, either of you guys.
I told them they need to have a speaking role, but they might be asked questions, so here's the ask.
Go for it.
You made the effort to come in tonight, I at least offer you a chance.
This is great, though, pleasure being here. Um, no, so you may remember you signed the fire service agreement, uh, back into two cities on thirteenth, uh, December twenty twenty. And it's, uh, they're working well ever since that time. Effectively come through pandemic, which you told me at the beginning of my career I would ever have to manage, I would hope to know. That's behind us at this point, um, come through what, uh, fire season and a half at this point, or coming into another one.
Any good news on that one? It's gonna be.
You know, every year is the same, the same, similar story, it's the worst year ever, so I stopped trying to predict that a long time ago.
Yeah.
I kind of predict, but there are a lot of them.
Thank you.
Doesn't work. But, uh, yeah, it's been a great partnership, you know, we, we've had opportunities in the fire service and the fire department, uh, that we haven't had in the past. And I think our employees are, are, are very happy with that, uh, we've been able to retain nearly all of them. Uh, so that's, that's, uh, memorable to all of us.
Yeah.
Especially as they, hiring the fire service, so the way general is, uh, going crazy. If you have to ask any questions, Kathy.
Tell us what your, uh, service expense still look like, ALS fights.
So we still are protecting ALS program, repairment program. I'm a down slash support, that's still something that is a goal of, of, of the department. Uh, we started that and we're growing very well with that up until the point that COVID hit, that took one now to sale almost completely. Um, and then since that point in time, we've incrementally been gaining contracts with a, uh, uh, medical director, um, buying equipment and, uh, trying to hire personnel that are ALS certified. Um, that program will roll out slowly at first, in all honesty, um, they'll be assigned to engine companies as they're on duty. Um, and as we are able to leverage more and more of those people out for attrition, it's our intent that you'll have a paramedic every fire, every ship.
That's great.
That's the intent, and she knows very well that, uh, but that's sometimes hard to get, uh, kicked off and rolling, so. Work in progress, but still working.
Thank you.
What again, what, what, um, as far as equipment for, uh, the city, what, what do we need, uh, what, what else is on the list of the big ticket items?
I'm gonna give you a list.
I want to know what's on.
Uh, right now, right now, honestly, nothing, I mean, we're, we're pretty well set, uh, the city bought a fire engine two years ago. Three years ago, so we're, we're pretty well set. The next thing we'll be looking at replacing, what we call a type three or the kind of fresh fire that stock you follow and.
Type three engine or?
A type three fire engine, a wildfire.
Yeah.
Um, and I've got discussion on behalf of May, where we buy a type three or what we call a type six, which is a much smaller vehicle, a little bit less, um, capabilities, but much cheaper, uh, maneuverable. Yeah, it gives us some advantages.
Good on the mountain roads.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's what, uh, Chief Stewart was asking, we, we just did another FEMA, you know, AFG grant, you know? He wanted the ones that are tight, that were moved, he actually had a custom one on a smaller chassis that was custom made that we're trying to get.
They're pretty popular right now.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Come back into fashion.
Yeah. Maybe that one too, but let us know, do, do bubble it up, you know, I've been working great with, uh, Sam and we've got some good stuff so far, a few things, but, you know, any other toys that we need to be safe, let us know.
Absolutely, we'll do.
Anything else? Hey, Chief Stagg.
Thank you.
You don't have to come up, I'm just offering. The mayor calls the day, we shut up.
Frank, we're gonna talk.
This, this will be your last, um, budget workshop here.
It will.
And your first, too, right?
Now, here. Yeah. Oh, I, I just would like to say that I appreciate the ongoing conversation about supporting and enhancing the police department, uh, great job, I love it. I also appreciate having, uh, had the opportunity to go through the budget process so far, glad, glad to help, so. I think the police department is in good shape and we're moving forward, uh, with your support, so I think, I think we're doing good. I can't wait to see, uh, what happens here in the city, the entire city, not just the police department, moving forward, so, looks good. Any questions from Chief up here?
We've, we've been talking about equipment, so.
Yes, thank you so much.
Ballistic shields, ballistic shields.
Cut them down. Okay, thanks, Shane, Public Works, anything? Again, just asking, you don't have to.
No.
Okay.
I support that, Shane.
Brian, engineering, anything?
Commercial street looks amazing with the granite going in, by the way, thank you.
Uh, there was somebody last night with a metal detector down there digging up the new road, we were like, hey dude, what are you doing?
Really? I know who you're talking about.
Yeah.
Um, no, just some thoughts that came up when we were talking about water and wastewater, so. In twenty, twenty twenty, we had to empty the reservoir, um, and clean the reservoir, and so we had to buy NIB water. And then last, last year we had to buy NIB water because of the drought. But this year we're in pretty good shape, like this time of year we're buying water already and, uh, so this year we're in pretty good shape. And then, um, we did a couple of big pipeline projects on Commercial Street to replace pipes before we paved, you know, so. There was quite a big, some big expenditures that I don't think we'll see again, I mean, we can plan, plan for incremental projects like that, but.
Or pay it forward.
Yeah. Yeah, upper broads are next project, so.
Nice. Any other questions for Brian?
I, I know, the, uh, the crosswalks are coming up, great.
Thanks.
A lot of planning permission, did a lot of that.
I know, but they, I, I watched that meeting and the person who handed in the design that was chosen was Brian. And it looks great.
It really does.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Rudy, Tanya, staff, anything?
Thank you for coming tonight, I ask them to come because this is, they're the ones that operationalize everything about the budget, you know, there's, uh, you hire me to do a lot of things. Um, this is one of the things I have to do, the list is not very long of things I have to do, but creating a budget is one. Um, uh, but making it work is gonna be that, so, you know.
Thank you all.
Victoria, anymore, you're good, you already got to speak, but anything else, you good?
Oh, well, I've enjoyed this process of, of, of audit as well as the.
Nobody ever said.
I've never heard somebody say enjoy the audit.
Actually, not.
We've got the right person. Thank you.
Thank you.
In terms of sharing information.
Thank you for making it so it's easy to understand. Yeah, I really appreciate that. I mean, it's like these spreadsheets, I'm going, oh, this is great.
So next steps, um, we'll bring you fee schedule, um, at the next council meeting on June eighth, we'll bring back the final, um, adoptable budget for you on June twenty second. That will include that fee schedule with the direction you give us, um, on the revisions. There's several other things you adopt, uh, the GAN limit, which will never expend that amount of money that is, um, on there, but we're required in the law to provide a couple of other things that go, um, along with the budget. And we will call out, um, on the twenty second, any changes that we've made, even if they're minor, um, related to your input tonight and or just things that have come up, um, in between here and there. Um, we'll do that in the staff report and highlight it, and you'll look for a, a bigger, more robust budget book, um, that goes along with it. Um, and then that will carry us through to, um, strategic planning, adopt a strategic plan, hopefully September, implement that strategic plan with a budget amendment to spend that ARPA money, um, on some good project for, um, our community. Um, and then in January, we'll, um, look to the beginning, the first meeting in February, look to do a mid-year, um, budget review, and then we'll be starting on next year's budget. If all goes well, um, we would have, um, in May, we would have the workshop done in the beginning of May and then have a final budget to you the first meeting, uh, in June next year.
All right.
Looking forward to how that changes. And now I'm eighteen minutes past the seven. I'm here all night, so whatever you need.
I did it, Tim. Okay, I'm looking for a listen to adjourn.
Hold on, hold on. No, I wanted to comment, I mean, I think, you know, thank you, first of all, thank you, thank you, thank you. Twenty eighteen, I started moving back here, decided to pick up the budget and look at it, um, and realized the city was, I couldn't read a budget. This is, you know, this was a five million dollar budget, it was unreadable, we must always remember that our budgets are a public document.
Thank you.
Understood.
Yes.
By the community, and what I was seeing was, was not comprehensible, I've got some fair amount of budget experience. So i- i- it went on and there was no communication around the budget, and then, you know, everything unwound as it did, and then Joan came in and spent, it took an entire year to get that budget in a digestible, uh, fashion, uh, and, and Sean has picked that up, Sean, Victoria, has picked that up really wisely and smartly. Uh, I absolutely applaud the reserve funds, because that is transparency, it's not just we have a slush fund, but these are actually committed funds to needs of the city and, and it becomes, as you said, clear, but there, there are a couple of things, so, um, there's concerns. Uh, we don't pay our staff enough, uh, we have the lowest paid staff in the, in the area. Um, and as one of the things was clear and evident in the budget tonight is how much it costs for staff turnover. Um, and the retaining staff is an investment that pays off in the long run, so we need to look at that, we do have aging infrastructure. So it's going to come down to, and, and we really don't have a lot of places to, um, cut costs. Uh, we, we are very bare bones, there's, there's no fat on, on those bones. So that leaves us with revenue and how we increase revenue, because we need more money, I mean, this is, this has been obvious, I think, for some time, particularly around the staff issues. Uh, so how do we do that? But, you know, it is done incrementally with our community as we figure out how to go, go forward together. For us, the next step is the strategic plan, a budget is a tool, a strategic plan says how we use that budget. And, and that's where we need to go with the budget, and, but the process is back on track. I never expected to become a city council member, but the budget drove that, and so I'm pretty happy to be sitting here with a real, uh, beautiful budget. It really is.
That you can read and understand.
It's, yeah, but everybody should be able to, that's.
No, but.
But anyway, so thank you so much for the efforts, and it really says a lot, um, about, because this is a staff process of pulling together everything, is Victoria. Everybody has to be in this in order for this to be working, uh, so it sets a direction for staff and we as a council, integrate that into the community. So we're on the right track, and it's just really great to see this, it's a moment I've been waiting for for a very long time. Here, thank you, Sean, and thank you, Victoria.
I second the whole thing you said.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second, the meeting is adjourned, thanks everybody for your time tonight.